As always, we begin our city council meeting with a prayer and a pledge. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to gather here and go about deliberating the business of the city of Saginaw. We're also very thankful for the special guests that we have here tonight with us, and we just want to thank you for that. And we also, a very special thanks for Councilman Dan Fitzpatrick back with us, and we just thank you for that. We ask you be with that as we deliberate tonight, and we do this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
And before we begin tonight, just remind the audience to refrain -- to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, also any cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior that may occur. And of course, this is a great time to check your phones and to make sure that they're on vibrate or off. We have a tendency to stop the meeting and wait for you, so you don't want that to happen. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Fitzpatrick, Councilwoman Tibbs, Councilwoman Bench, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neal is absent, Councilwoman Chlorus, Councilwoman Moore, Councilman Balls, and Councilman Clock is also absent, Mayor Browning.
President.
We have seven members present and two absent this evening.
Thank you.
And Mayor, that takes us to announcements. I do have a few. I'd like to remind everyone that curbside recycling eliminates the sorting requirements. For complete details, visit the city website at saginaw-mi.com. Also a reminder that curbside yard waste pickup started April 1st and will run through the end of November. And the Waste Collection Convenience Station will be open Saturday, May 9th, to city residents to dispose of items such as building materials. And also to note that we do have a revised agenda that has been issued. It's been issued to all the council members. The only revision to this agenda is the removal of item number five, which was under reports from boards, commission, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members. Mayor, that takes us to our first proclamation this evening. It's designating May 1st, 2015, as Law Day, and present to accept is attorney-at-law Christopher Engie of the Saginaw County Bar Association.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and it's our honor to have one of our council members, attorney, to be able to present that tonight. So, Councilman Tibbs, if you would.
Whereas Law Day is an occasion of public acknowledgement of our nation's heritage of justice, liberty, and equality under the law, and whereas Congress issued a joint resolution in 1961 declaring May 1 Law Day, which is a national day to recognize and celebrate our justice system and the rule of law, and whereas Law Day allows all citizens to recognize and honor the contributions of lawyers, judges, and law enforcement agencies, and individuals in our community for the responsibilities they bear to commitment of the rule of law, and whereas 2015 marked the 800th anniversary of a milestone in legal history, the sealing of Magna Carta at Runmeed, England in 1215 -- don't hold me on that one. The founders of our nation drew upon the principles of Magna Carta in drafting our cherished documents of liberty, including the Declaration of Independence, United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And whereas Magna Carta has become one of the world's most enduring symbols of liberty under law, and continues to be a source of inspiration in their international struggle to advance human rights, and whereas the American Bar Association has identified the 2015 Law Day theme as Magna Carta, symbol of freedom under law. Law Day 2015 will be commemorated in the state of Michigan and celebrated in Saginaw with mock trials from all area high schools on April 30th, 2015, and presentation of awards on May 7th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 1st, 2015, as Law Day in the city of Saginaw, and call upon the people of the city of Saginaw to acknowledge the importance of our legal and judicial system with appropriate ceremonies and activities in support of this observance. I further encourage schools, businesses, media, religious institutions, civic, and service organizations to join members of the bar and bench in commemorating Law Day. In witness whereof, I have hereon too set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 20th day of April in the year of our Lord 2015. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor, council persons, Amos O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Chlorus, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clock, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and also signed by the city manager Timothy Morales.
Thank you. On behalf of the Saginaw County Bar Association, we greatly appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank. Madam Clerk?
Our final proclamation is in recognition of the Arthur Hill High School Boys Basketball Team for their successful 2014-2015 season.
And can I have the coach please come up to the podium? And I'd also like to have the coaches behind you, but players, please stand up in the front rows for us, please. Would you please stand up? Coaches, would you follow behind your other -- or coach, your assistant coaches up there also, please? Okay, it's -- and Coach, when I'm done and we're all done, I'd like to have you at least introduce the members of your team and your staff to all of us in a few. But let me start off by this certificate of recognition presented to, and it will be to each and every one of yous there. Whereas the Saginaw City Council is proud to recognize the members of the Arthur Hill High School Basketball Team for their 2014-2015 season and their performance in the Michigan High School Athletic Association Boys Basketball Tournament, advancing to the Michigan Class A State Championship. And whereas a winning season consists of hard work, great coaching, determination, and a strong team effort. The Arthur Hill Lumberjacks demonstrated their fortitude and athletic ability, finishing 14-0 in the Saginaw Valley League North Conference and 24-4 overall for 2014 and 2015. And whereas Saginaw is proud of the reputation of the lumberjacks have earned and the fine publicity they have brought to our community through their inspired team play and successful basketball season. And whereas all team members, coaches, and staffs deserve special commendation for their outstanding achievement and for being a stellar example to the youth in our community, confirming what hard work and dedication can accomplish. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and all our citizens, do hereby offer congratulations to the Arthur Hill High School Boys Basketball Team for their outstanding 2014-2015 season. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, the mayor, council members Amos O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Chlorus, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clock, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and Timothy Morales, our city manager. Congratulations. Coach, you want to come up first here? I'd like to have the rest of the players and staff follow, and we'd love to shake your hand. Thank you. Michael, grab your name before you lose it. Coach, a few words, please, and introduce our fine, outstanding team that you have with us.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for recognizing these young men on the great effort, outstanding season that we had. This team worked hard, came together, and banded together, and took their talents, and you know, we wanted to win it all, but you know, this team just did a great job of representing not just Arthur Hill, but the city of Saginaw with their class and you know, their sportsmanship. You know, and not only are they great basketball players, but these guys are great students. You know, these guys carrying -- got guys with 4.0s, 2.5 or better as a team, so that's the thing I'm most proud of. You know, we got our seniors going to college, Eric Davis going to Texas, Dequavion Johnson going to Fair State, so on full ride. So that's more important than winning championships to me, getting these young men, you know, the opportunity to go on and get a college scholarship. But you know, I got to thank my staff. You know, you're only as good as your staff, and you can attend to that. You know, I got Coach Marshall Gray, Coach Tim Prince, Jason Holder, Tony Davis, Greg Lawson couldn't be here, but without them, you know, we wouldn't -- we all wouldn't be successful without a great staff. Those guys take care of everything that I need to get done. We're going to recognize the players from starting to my right. We got Damari Lloyd, Cruz Garcia, Jimmy Bell, Vincent Johnson, Nate Moore, Patrick Robertson, Billy Burton, Brian Boines, Eric Davis, and Jalen Broder. I think we missing PJ and who else? And Trey Quay. Well, Dequavion Johnson. And Will Rogers also. Thanks, Coach. See, that's why you got to have good assistants. But thanks a lot, and we really appreciate it.
You're all set. We're going to wait for them to leave before we start. Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat tonight, we ask you please remove it in the council chambers. Appreciate that very much. Madam Clerk, we're ready to continue on.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at personal appearances.
And I have some personal appearance here. Remember that on personal appearances, the speaker is limited to three minutes. Three minutes. The purpose of a personal appearance is to address city -- address council. Speaker shall address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. All questions will be referred to the city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speaker shall not ask questions of specific council members. Purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and not to deal with individual personalities. Personally, abuse of attack, slanderous, or profane remarks about any person shall not be permitted. Violation of these rules would be considered a breach of order, for which the speaker's appearance will be terminated. Refusal to yield the floor will be considered a breach of peace and subject to violator to removal from the city council chambers. With that, Madam Clerk, let's start with our first.
Our first speaker this evening is Andrea L. Vale.
They need to know we're starting this, so we can -- would you, Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Andrea L.
I don't see our former mayor here, and I wonder if they're -- oh, is she here? Oh, she is. Okay. So, well, let's announce it one more time.
Andrea L. Vale.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Nathaniel Woods.
Nathaniel Woods. Good evening to Mayor Browning and city manager, Tim Morales, to all council members. My name is Nathaniel Woods. I'm a senior at Saginaw High School. I attended the Delta College to become a security specialist to work on security systems. My GPA is 3.3. My favorite hobbies are playing video games, listening to music, and web searching on devices. Personal motto, I can do all things though Christ who strings me Philippines 413. My community service, I have done is recycling. I am the member of Rose Hill Baptist Church. I'm the parents, I am the child of Durinda Carvison and Nathaniel Woods II. That's it.
Next speaker is Kathy Wagner.
Good evening to the council members and our mayor, city manager. I'm Kathy Wagner. I've lived in Saginaw for almost 68 years. It's been my home. Before I start this tonight, I'm here to speak about the crime-free lease addendum. I would like to ask everyone that's here representing our neighborhood associations to just stand, so you can see. You cannot. All right, well, there are, I believe, seven of us that are here tonight, maybe more. And I'd like to talk a little bit about, there was a question on the code enforcement being overworked to have the addendum put in place tonight. And two weeks ago in council meeting, I believe John Stempel was asked about that, and he answered and said that it would not be a problem that he could foresee happening. So I wanted to bring that up before you vote on this. And a bad tenant list, and I just want everybody to know here and at home that the city doesn't have a bad tenant list. The landlord association may have one. It's a mechanism that they have, and the association only represents 20% of the landlords in the city of Saginaw. Many landlords do not want to be members, and no one can force them to be members. We, as homeowners, living next door to some properties that are rented through these landlords, or in some cases through banks that have managers renting them, pay our taxes, we pay our utilities on time, we take care of our homes, and we would like to have a little bit of this put into action tonight to be voted into, so we can have a little peace of mind, maybe, of these landlords who don't understand what's happening in their rental properties. They don't have an idea that people maybe are yelling and screaming, they may be firing off guns, they may be directing illicit comments to children in the neighborhood. So, we aren't talking about all the good landlords. There are some bad, and I feel that the homeowners that pay our property taxes, who've worked all their life, some of us are retired, like ourselves, should be able to have a little peace of mind in our neighborhoods, on our blocks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Milconian.
Again, good evening. There are 15 neighborhood associations at this point that make up, that represent the residents here in the city. One out, I believe the last council meeting, I did show everyone, which every council member and city manager did receive, a signed endorsement for the crime-free lease addendum at this point. The Northmore Association has included their name on this list, and there's one association that I personally have not heard from at this point. So the majority of the neighborhood associations do endorse the crime-free lease addendum. Let's remember, the addendum. I do want to emphasize the fact, the bulk of the language consists of Saginaw city ordinances that are already on the books and have been in play and enforced for many years. That being said, the new language would never affect a law-abiding, ethical landlord in Saginaw. However, I would be disappointed of any landlord or individual willing to dismiss this addendum based on a belief it is unfair or heavy-handed towards landlords. If we argue the heavy-handed position for the layperson, we should dissolve all ordinances that are on the books by the city as they are heavy-handed towards each of us. Obviously, this is nonsense, but the point is that we, as citizens, are required to follow certain laws and ordinances as tenants, and as tenants, we are also required to act a certain way while residing within other people's property. When tenants fail to do so, sanctions can be imposed, or ultimately, they can be evicted from their home. Should a landlord fail to perform their job as keeper of their property, or fail to hold tenants to their obligation when they choose not to, why would the landlord feel they are somehow exempt from being held accountable? Nobody is above the law, and we are speaking on laws that affect those around the problem. Example, neighbors, neighborhood. These outside parties have nothing to do with the situation but suffer from the situation. Thus, we should have strict enforcement to resolve the situation by powers outside of the parties involved when they fail to do so. As long as landlords follow the process and make a faithful attempt to reduce or remove the issue causing problems, then they have met their responsibility, and the enforcement falls strictly on the tenant causing the issues. It is only when the landlord ignores the issues that they become part of the enforcement process. Remember, by fail, we are talking three quality-of-life violations in a 12-month period. Quality-of-life violations would include changes that relate to gang activity. Thank you. I urge you to pass.
My name is Deanna Versiglio. I live at 2035 Vernon Street. Good evening, Mayor Browning, members of council, city manager, city staff. I'm a lifelong Saginaw resident and a homeowner for over 50 years. I'm here to ask you to approve the crime-free lease addendum before you tonight. The neighborhood associations have worked for years for this type of regulation to be implemented. This ordinance will increase Saginaw property values, encourage responsible tenant behavior, it will be a tool for code enforcement, rental property maintenance, and eviction if needed. A yes vote will benefit landlords, homeowners, and tenants of the city of Saginaw. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Notilfer.
Good evening. My name's Kim Notilfer. Been a resident of the city for 41 years, and a member of the Covenant Neighborhood Association for the last eight years since we began. I looked at the addendum again over the weekend, I've looked at it several times, and I really, what I take from it is that if you've been a landlord in the city, trying to do a good job and put good tenants in, be community-minded, this isn't going to change anything for you. You'll just do your business as you've always done it. If you're on the other end, you know, where you haven't really maybe done best effort is trying to put good tenants in and to work with the community a little bit, it's probably going to be a wake-up call. You know, there's a lot of people that are residents here that want to see a better Saginaw, and we need for you to step up to the plate, along with us, to make this a more of a quality place to live, a more family-friendly community. So I hope this passes tonight. I think it's important for the associations and for the residents, and I think it'll help move us forward even more than we have been recently. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Osborne.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, city council members, manager Morales. My name is Paul Osborne. I've been a landlord in Saginaw for many, many years, and I'm here to support the crime-free lease ordinance and hope that it does pass this evening. I appreciate all the work that you've done throughout the years, the council members, the hard work to make Saginaw a nice place to live, and a place where you get a quality of life. And I believe that this lease, or I mean this addendum, I'm sorry, will do that. I believe that it will increase the quality of life in Saginaw. So, again, I hope that this passes, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Our next speaker is Mark Oberschmidt.
My name is Mark Oberschmidt. I live in the city of Saginaw. I'm on the board of the Landlords Association. I'm also vice president of my neighborhood association, which I was president of for six years, where I have some houses that are located. A little history on this ordinance roots. About 18 months ago, there were shots fired in the neighborhood I live in. The house where this took place was a home with a lot of traffic and ongoing problems. When I heard of the shooting, I saw that this is an opportunity to get the occupants evicted. When I contacted the police to get a copy of the report, I was told it was an ongoing investigation, a copy could not be issued. Frustrated, I contacted the Landlords Association to find out if the landlord was a member, and to find out what she was going to do about this. When I got ahold of her, she told me she was not notified of the shooting. I found out later that no attempt was being made on a regular basis by the police or fire department to notify a homeowner or a landlord that there was even a problem at their property. This is where this has all risen from, this giant ordinance, this complicated ordinance. All we wanted as landlords was to be notified by the police or fire department so we could react. Our owner info is in the database. What you have before you is a multi-page ordinance which does not have written support by the judges that they can or will sign on with this. I heard something earlier about John Stempel. I don't know which John Stempel they're talking to, but when I talked to John Stempel, he said he did not have, John Stempel's the head of inspections, I was told he has neither the funds or the manpower to inspect every piece of property on a yearly basis in the city of Saginaw. This ordinance stipulates that as a landlord, I must have proof my property is inspected in the past year. I don't know how you're going to, how I'm going to get that if it's not possible to inspect it. The Landlords Association has almost 500 members who control thousands of pieces of properties in the city of Saginaw. They work with the neighborhood associations. They work with the city of Saginaw. 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 They work with the neighborhood associations where homes are located by going to their meetings and the citywide meetings as well. Anyone with a rental that has a problem can contact the Landlords Association to see if the landlord is a member. If the landlord is a member, he or she will be confronted with the problem and asked to resolve it. Don't enact an ordinance that does not have written judicial consent or the manpower to enforce it. By the way, did you take out the part that says you're going to fine the landlords a hundred percent if they're a day late with their rental license money? I am not here because this will affect me, except to make doing business more complicated and expensive. We are going down a slippery slope when you try to fine someone for someone else's behavior. I have a little pamphlet here from the Landlords Association on how to notify landlords, the landlord association, if you think you have a problem in your neighborhood. We've engaged the city as much as possible as an association to try to resolve these problems, but this ordinance is just lengthy, unnecessary, and complicated. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andre Barello.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, in the absence of Mayor Protem and council members. And tonight, I also address city staff and the citizens of Saginaw as you are truly the fortunate ones. As many of you know, I've had an association with the city of Saginaw since becoming a law clerk in nineteen ninety-two. But tonight, I address you as a humble and appreciative resident who endured what would have been a most horrific tragedy but for the watchful eye and swift action of a neighbor and the vigilant and brave heroism of a synchronous alliance of the most professional firefighters. Captain Greg Simmons, Lieutenant Bill McCarthy, Lieutenant Derek Sanders, Engineer Robert Weaver, Engineer Darren Sodolsky, firefighter Justin Kelly, firefighter Brandon Hausback, I think who is with us this evening, firefighter Jeff Isop, firefighter John Karts, firefighter Brad Lutzek, Training and Safety Officer Anna Lee Aguilar, Fire Marshal Ralph Martin, Battalion Chief Tom Rains, Chief Chris Van Lou, my neighbor Chris Lukowski, and I think an honorary member of the Fire Department, Mr. John Stempel. These incredible heroes executed their craft with professionalism, precision, diligence, bravery, and most importantly, with the utmost care when responding to a fire at my home here in the city of Saginaw. When I arrived, my longtime dear friend and once neighbor, Tom Rains, said the crew was already hard at work locating our beloved pet, Double Stuff, not to mention the suppression efforts of the others. I will never forget Greg Simmons relentless effort to revive our buddy with a small oxygen mask while he was wrapped in a blanket. Greg, although I desperately envisioned a different outcome in my dream that night, your heroism and rapid response gave him the only chance at what would have been a miracle. Clearly, the damage done to our family home would have been much worse without the crew's amazing response. To me, it was not a battalion of nameless public servants. They were the friends and family that come to aid in a time of imminent danger and peril. What's most amazing is that these folks do this every day, every week, every month, every year. Some responded, "Thanks, Andre. We're just doing our job." And that's just it. They did their job. But what the crew and our residents should never forget is that this so-called job is an awesome responsibility of being the protector of life and property, the first responder to safety and health emergencies, and the guardians of our neighborhoods and way of life. Why is Saginaw a great place to live? Because we have our friends and family protecting us. The blood relatives, the grade school buddies, and our fearless public servants in the Saginaw Fire Department. My family will be forever in your debt, and you have our enduring gratitude. Thank you.
Could you come forward for me, please? Come right up here, please. Until you get your other one back. There's your pen. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Our next speaker is Brittany Jones. And Brittany, we'll be mentioning some handouts which has been placed in front of each council member. Yes, yes, you do.
Good evening to the Honorable Mayor Dennis Browning and City Manager Tim Morales and council members. I'm here with my fellow scholarship recipients, Ashkira Corr, Morgan Loester, Lanay Jackson, Ramiro Guerrero, and Nathan Woods. My name is Brittany Jones. I attend Arthur Hill High School. My college goals are I want to become a dermatologist. I plan on going to U of M Flint, majoring in pre-med. My GPA is a three-point-three. My hobbies are cosmetology school. My personal motto is "Live life to the fullest because you never know what's going to happen next." I attend Word of Faith Ministries, and my parents are Nina Jones and Joe Jones. We want to invite all of you to our ball this Saturday on April twenty-fifth at 6:00 P.M. At the Horizon Conference Center, we are honoring Mayor Dennis Brown and City Manager Tim Morales. Thank you for all of your outstanding work. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dawn Goodrow.
Good evening, council, city manager, city staff. Dawn Goodrow, two-ten South Washington. I'm here on behalf, for a couple of reasons, actually. The first, on behalf of the Downtown Neighbors Group, the latest neighborhood group. And we are mostly all renters. And the renters that have either been to our last meeting or two or have been in the coffeehouse or on the street are in support of the Crime Lease Addendum. We've had quite a turnaround with leases and renters in downtown. We still have, from Section Eight to market-rate housing, and all and everyone in between is in support of this ordinance. We want a, a nice neighborhood to live in without any problems. And so we are in support of that. Thank you, Councilman Tibbs, for all of your work on that and to the others in the neighborhood associations. The second thing is I'm a commissioner with the Arts and Enrichment Commission of Saginaw. And on May seventh, Thursday, May seventh, we have our Twenty-Sixth Annual All-Area Arts Awards. Fourteen people from, fourteen tremendous enthusiastic and very talented people from our city and around the area will be recognized and chosen as recipients of the art award. This is our major fundraiser. As you know, the, this is a group commissioned through the city. And we most recently granted, re-granted out of our endowment $28,000 for arts and cultural events in the city. We have our upcoming Saginaw Celebrates Summer. That calendar will be coming out in June. And we just want to invite you to come to the, enjoy the evening. It's forty dollars a ticket. Again, it's our biggest fundraiser and helps us keep things alive and well and, and give that quality of life to people we want to attract to the city. So thank you very much. And I also want to give kudos to our city staff. Phil Carwatt and his crew, Simeon, have done a tremendous job. We use the Riverwalk, and they have got the trees trimmed and Ojibwe done and cleaned up. I hope at some point, we can get glass taken care of. And I don't know how we prevent that. I'm sure we have an ordinance that calls for not breaking bottles. But anyway, the city is looking really good along the riverfront, so... And I know we have some great riverfront cleanups coming up. So thanks again to everybody.
Our next speaker is Jose Barajas.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, city council, city manager, Tim Morales. My name is Jose Barajas. I represent the Southwest Neighborhood Association as treasurer. For over sixty-four years, I lived in the city. I love the city. I'm not going nowhere. Our association is the largest in the city with the most problems with renters. We are very active with Light Up the City, Arson Watch, Citizens on Patrol, volunteers mowing about foreign or vacant lots in our area. We are concerned of the quality of life for our neighborhood, for people that own their homes and keep their yards clean. Hard workers, proud of their homes, and taxpayers. Once a month, we meet with our neighbors, calling them in advance to attend. Do you know what they tell me? There is a new tenant in the block that doesn't cut the grass, shovel the sidewalk. They are loud parties, unruly teens, rubbish all over, unregistered vicious dogs, vehicles parked on lawns. They are late-night partiers, heavy traffic, selling drugs, guns and gunshots. They're afraid to leave their homes. They also are afraid to enjoy their backyards and let their kids play outside. These homeowners need help. The landlords of these properties are uncaring, concerned only with the almighty dollar. They should live next door to these tenants to see how they live. One house like this can destroy the whole block. I am also a landlord. I have promise also that I help. I give my home number to the neighbors of my rentals to call me anytime that problems occur. We don't want homeowners putting their homes up for sale because of this problem. We want the tract families to live in the city and our neighborhood to not to leave. I fully endorse and support the Crime Free Lease Addendum. Thank you much.
Next speaker is Ramiro Guerrero.
Good evening to the Honorable Mayor Dennis Browning and council members. My name is Ramiro Guerrero II. I attend Arthur Hill High School. My college goals or plans are to attend Delta College for my first two years and then transfer to CMU. My grade point average is a three-point-three. My hobbies include playing football and boxing, training other boxers to become better. Also, I play the drums and I sing, spend time with my loved ones, and play the drums at church. My personal motto is, "With God, I can do all things. Without Him, I can do nothing," and I always stick to that. My community service or affiliations are volunteering at my church and other churches, doing community outreaches and food giveaways. I attend Harvest Assembly of God. My parents are Ramiro and Anna Guerrero. Thank you. God bless you.
Our next speaker is David Connor.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, council, city manager. I wanted to bring to your attention about, about these, these tickets. I was at the emergency, I was at the hospital visiting my wife while she's, we was talking to her surgeon. And I came back and I had one of these in the door, which I don't have any problem about the ten dollars. I was looking at the, the Terry Town, New York. That's, that's, that's outsourcing. That's, you know, that's money that's going way out and they didn't get it to come back around. And for that ten dollars, you know, that ten dollars could be put right back into this city and, 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 you know, pave the roads or had a grass cut or things like that. Because I'm a volunteer myself. I was cutting the grass when the city didn't know who was cutting the grass. Because I, you know, I, I think about the kids. Because, you know, there was things I was finding in the grass that, you know, I turned over to the police. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that, you know, this, this is outsourcing. And, and this money should come right back to the city. It shouldn't go all the way to New York and then come back around here, you know, because it's just like, almost like washing the money and sending it back here. But I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that, you know, it, it's not about the ten dollars. It's, it's about the ten dollars stand in the city and, and the city taking the ten dollars and using it to pave the roads, to cut the grass, or et cetera. Thank you for listening to me. You're welcome.
And our final speaker this evening is Larry Campbell.
Good evening, mayor, city council persons, city manager, staff, viewing audience, audience present. I'm Larry Campbell, president of Northeast Side Neighborhood Association. I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Saginaw for forty-plus years. I come before you tonight for, I got three different things on the agenda. Hopefully, I can get through them. One of them is the Crime Free Lease Addendum. The other one is talking in regards to parks. And I, there was a like typographical area that was put in there. And the other one is recycling environmentally, dealing with nine-eleven, Best Memorial Parkway, which I brought in before you previously on that endeavor. First off, to the associations and the members present, yes, I'm here in support of the Crime Free Lease Addendum. I've had some dialogue with Mr. Tibbs, and kudos to him and everyone involved. And we were at sub-meetings. The only questions, and there were some language taken out. And I think that language helped push me over the top. I looked at this over the weekend, had dialogue in with Mr. Tibbs. And I'm in agreement with it. Only thing I want to make sure of is be, I'm also a landlord. Been a landlord for many, many years. I have great tenants in my property. The three violations and out in the hundred, in the one year with the significant fine. Just want to make sure as we go through enforcement that all landlords that are making every faithful attempt, every faithful attempt, is, is make sure that's documented and that no penalty is imposed. And I, we had that dialogue several times. So that's the only thing that I want to make sure. As for enforcement, getting into Mr. Stempel and his organization, talking about nine-eleven, Best Memorial Parkway. He's, he's done an admirable job at this point. We inform those individuals that the residents are not going to tolerate that this year. This is a breaking point year for all the debris and everything. And Mr. Stempel has stepped up to the plate, and we're making tremendous progress. So I applaud his, his organization for that at this time. As for Mr. Phil Carwatt and his organization, the parks, we thank you, Mr. Carwatt, and we thank your group for participating in the parks that we're working on. And we're making tremendous progress on that. And it looks like we're going to get some equipment for the parks on the northeast side in that particular area. And so I just thank all the parties involved. And I just wanted to also reiterate that there's certain other things that we're doing also with Light Up the City as it's coming before you. I'm part of that committee too, and we just hope everyone will participate and get involved in that because it's going to be even more outstanding this year. So I thank you for the time and attention.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Remind the council members that you are limited to five minutes. And tonight, we will begin with Councilwoman Brenda Moore.
Good evening, citizens of Saginaw. First of all, I'd like to welcome you all here. And I am so thankful that you took the time out. I would love to see council chambers like this every meeting. It is full. It is full. It is full. My hat goes off to the, to the Law Association and also to the young men from Arthur Hill. That is a great accomplishment. I mean, when I heard the numbers, I'm not really a football fan, so... When I, I mean basketball fan, so you can tell I'm not into sports. When I heard the fourteen to zero, I mean, that was, that was a good, that was just awesome. And then when he mentioned about the academics, I'm more into the academic part, and that's what got my eye. So my hat goes off to the Arthur Hill players. And for all of our speakers who spoke tonight, I'd like to thank you for coming out. I too got pushed over the edge a little bit with the Crime Free Addendum. I just want to hear some more, some more about it. And if you haven't been down, in the downtown area, I walked through it last weekend, just walking, just walking. And I live on the east side, and it was so peaceful. It was just so peaceful. It was just peaceful, just walking. So I encourage all of our citizens to just come and patronize downtown, Rita's Place, Martini Bar. Just come downtown and just see the new stuff that's going on. Because it's really, it is really beginning to sound and look good. The only problem we're gonna have is when we have our concerts at the First Mayor Park, because I can sit on my porch and hear the concert. I just can't see the people. So other than that, I don't have any more comments, Mayor.
Thank you.
I want to be very brief because what I had to cover, part of it was elegantly covered by Mr. Barello, that it would be, be very embarrassing to try to follow an act like that. Great, great job, Mr. Barello. I, I conclude my short statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess I will start with Mr. Oberschmidt. I wanted to repeat once again because I, I think maybe you left... I wanted to repeat once again, because I, I think maybe you left before we got to council comment last time, but there is no 100% penalty in this ordinance that we are considering tonight. The 100% penalty has always existed. It is regarding the registration fee for a non-owner occupied residence. Um, and that inspection requirement was also always there. So that is not part of the ordinance we are considering tonight. Mr. Borello, thank you for sharing your experience and bringing your family with you. Um, I am so sorry for the ordeal that you guys have experienced. Um, but we are always very grateful to our first responders and our fire department for always being so professional and, uh, doing their job. And, and you are correct, anytime you think any of these folks who are genuinely heroes, um, they, they always say, "Well, we're just, we're just doing our job." And, uh, some days when you do your job, it means a lot more, um, for some people. So, um, just to thank them. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman, uh, someone else?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm excited, excited about tonight. As Ms. Councilwoman Moore said, I mean, this is our government working at its best. I mean, we have our, our young adults here being recognized for their great accomplishments. We have even younger adults here, uh, young kids who are recognizing grown people take care of business. I mean, we're shedding a good example for them, and, I mean, I agree with Councilwoman Moore, this is government working well, and I'm very appreciative. And we're recognizing our, our first responders and, uh, someone who works very hard for our city, who was helped tremendously by them. And, uh, I, it's kudos to what we're experiencing, uh, tonight. I would like to, uh, recognize the Arthur Hill basketball team. It's a very humbling experience for me, I'm happy for them. Uh, cause my oldest son, he played in AAU basketball with a lot of those kids, uh, in elementary school and middle school, and I used to look down on them. Now, I'm looking up at them, and it's, they're great, grown up to be great men, and, uh, that's, it's a good thing, and I appreciate it for the adult supervision that they have. I'm happy for our neighborhood associations. This is something that they've been asking for since, I would say, 2009. And, um, many of them have been life residents. Uh, these, this is, Saginaw is their home. It's not a business for them. I think that, um, which I believe the City Council does, that they listen to them with a nag. John Stimple meets with them regularly. Uh, they have their own neighborhood association meetings, they have a citywide, uh, association meeting. Um, this is Saginaw, and, uh, this is their home. This is not a business for them. And no matter what happens here tonight, I'm glad that, uh, our neighborhood associations were heard, cause again, this is their home. This is not a business for them. Um, I guess I'd like to thank the Landlord Association for participating in this nine-month discussion. I see them as a partner, not enemy. I believe a lot of our neighborhood associations see them as a partner and not enemy. And no matter what, what happens here today, the discussion will continue. For example, the, uh, 100% fine, it, even though it's not on the table today, as I spoke with some other landlords earlier this week and the past couple of weeks, I'm just one person sitting at this table, but I'm willing to relook at that. I mean, if it's impeding business in the city, and it's, uh, uh, it's, uh, being an anchor on positive, uh, property owners, I think it should be looked at. And so, uh, it's a continuing discussion. Um, just to address some of the things that were raised by the Landlord Association, and it's still gonna be addressed. I mean, this is an ongoing discussion. Uh, first, uh, judicial review, uh, land, judges cannot sign off on, uh, something that's not before them. It's, it's unethical and it's, it's not, it, it can't be done. I mean, that's just not how our legal system, um, works. Um, however, this ordinance is pretty much mirrors what's been already happening in Saginaw Township since 2009. And Saginaw Township has, has not had a problem with their ordinance, and as I stated, it's, it mirrors it. So if there, if it hasn't had a problem, uh, for the six years it has been in existence, I guess I can't see how it has a problem now. Uh, the second part of the ordinance, it mirrors, I believe there's about hundreds of municipalities across this country who has this ordinance, and, uh, there's, hasn't been really any significant issues, um, on that front. Um, if anything, what I heard with John Stimple said, he said that this ordinance could be a tool that he could use in certain situations, and it could be a useful tool. And I think that's how this should be looked at. Now, this is not a sword where we're trying to penalize landlords. I believe, uh, Kim said it best. He said, "This is really a, a wake-up call." We have a, a standard here in the city that we believe others should live up to. And when we have people living outside of the city dictating our standards, then that's a problem. And as I said, this, this ordinance here is just raising the bar on what is acceptable in this, in this city, and it's a wake-up call. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
My pleasure to call upon, uh, Officer Dan Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good to see everybody. Uh, it's good to be back. Eight weeks ago Friday, I was at Covenant Hospital having, uh, quadruple bypass surgery, so, uh, saved my life, and, uh, I'm very, very grateful to the folks at Covenant, to the doctors, uh, there, the cardiologists, to the MCVI, uh, folks, uh, technicians and nursing staff are second to none. It is, uh, at, uh, and, and what is so neat is that we have world-class hospitals right here in Saginaw, and, uh, very, very talented, uh, people, uh, just very caring individuals, as well as very talented and professional folks. So I'm very grateful to them. I, uh, I'm also very grateful for all the prayers and well wishes that I've gotten from, uh, city staff and, uh, people in the city. I want to thank the first responders for, uh, being one of the first people, first groups, uh, that responded by, uh, sending me, uh, uh, something, uh, is the firefighters' union. Uh, it was very, it were very, meant a lot to me. And, uh, also for the, uh, the manager's staff who, uh, were so kind. And I want to thank, uh, all you folks on council too, who, who, uh, called me early on. I didn't, um, I didn't return calls, uh, those first four weeks or so, it just wasn't something that I, actually, my wife had a guard at the door, so, it was, uh, anyway, uh, I, I'm just fairly glad to be back, and thank you, everybody, for, for thinking about me. Um, in particular, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Watson, Dr. Jenko, Dr. Martin, uh, both from MCVI and from Covenant, um, as well. As far as the crime-free, uh, lease of denim, I, I guess we've heard from folks that, uh, live in the city, uh, and who are also not only residents but landlords. I, I think that's pretty impressive, that we've got folks here who are both, uh, overwhelmingly saying, "We like this." Uh, there might be some things need tweaking, I guess, but, uh, it sounds like it's a, it's a, it's a slam dunk, uh, and I'm, and I'm, you know, feel very positive about it. Mr. Borello, Mrs. Borello, and the Borello kids, I just cannot say how thankful I am that you guys weren't home at the time that that happened. Uh, and how proud I am, again, of the firefighters and for the, the city was there too, uh, quick. And, uh, I know the police department was, was also there. I just, the sirens, uh, it's not too far from me, I heard the sirens. And, uh, uh, when I heard about what happened, it's just, uh, you know, I'm just so thankful. Thank you for, and thank you for coming and saying that. It's real, just super. That's just super. And, uh, that's all I have.
Officer Fitzpatrick, glad to have you back here at the table with us. I will attest that, uh, you, we could not get close to you for the first four weeks. Uh, as a neighbor, I could make it to the foot of the driveway, and that was it. And Kathy would be out there, and bless her heart, stood by you all this time in the wonderful, wonderful, so thank you very much, uh, and we're so glad to have you back here. Councilman Balls.
I'd like to thank the citizens for showing up at this, uh, council meeting today, and, and can't say enough about the neighborhood associations for what y'all do. Uh, as a city council, I'm sure everybody here appreciate what the, uh, neighborhood association do for the city of Saginaw. Um, I personally would like to thank the, uh, first female mayor for coming here this evening and bringing the students, Ms. Wilmeham, Ms. Zee. And I really appreciate the, uh, scholarship program that you're doing, um, you know, as a, encouraging our youth to be, to be good students in the city of Saginaw. Uh, I noticed your speaker this year is gonna be Dr. Brittany Burns, M.D. This young lady used to play basketball in the city of Saginaw, and then she went on to earn her doctor's degree, now she's a medical doctor. You know, it's a beautiful thing when we have our youth to come back to the city and speak to our youth about, you, the young kids, about what they can accomplish if they just go to school and do the right thing. I'm so involved with the, uh, Big Brothers and Sisters program. Um, I'm always talking about, um, people being mentors, um, to the, to the children of the city of Saginaw. We have a lot of kids who don't have fathers at home, and, and, and being a mentor is really rewarding for our community and for those youth. Uh, I would encourage everybody here to get involved in the program, especially if I can get somebody like the mayor to join that program, you can imagine how much it may have other people want to get involved in the program too. It don't even take a lot, uh, two or three hours a month, uh, to, uh, mentor youth, and it's really rewarding. I personally had one of my little brothers call me, uh, last weekend and told me that he really appreciated what I did for him, that I've been like a brother and a father to him, and that he really, really, really wanted to thank me for all the things that I've done for him and the time that I spent with him. Um, I must tell you that I told him, "Don't ever call me again with comments like that making me cry on the telephone." You know, cause I, uh, I only did it out of my heart and for what's good for the city of Saginaw. This guy has not participated in any crimes in the city of Saginaw. He has not brought any kids here out of wedlock. Uh, he, he's a good young man, he's doing a good thing. Uh, he's working every day, uh, drive back and forth to Flint every day working, so he's, he's a good youth. And, and it can happen to a lot of youths that, cause it only takes a second or two for a kid to get off on the wrong track and end up locked up, or, or having some kids who he's not taking care of and stuff like that. So I would encourage everybody here to get involved in the youth's life. Even the reporter, Mike, Mike Tow, I can imagine him, uh, being a mentor with a kid and teaching him how to be a reporter or something like that. Um, it's a beautiful thing. Uh, Yolanda, a lot of people here that could be really good mentors in the city of Saginaw, so I hope that we all get involved in that. But, um, you know, it's, it's always good to see the youth come here and talk and to get involved in a political process and trying to get people to get involved in situations that's good for the city of Saginaw. I want to thank them all for showing up too. And, uh, Mr. Borello, I'm glad that you guys are safe. I'm glad that our fire department could do what they did and make everything safe for you and your family. Um, you know, it's a beautiful thing, you see people sitting here and talk about what happened instead of them not being able to talk about it. You know, it's good to see you guys here, and I'm glad you guys are safe. And to, uh, my fellow councilmen, it's good to see you back, man. It's really good. Yeah, so, um, other than that, I don't have too many other comments. I just want to thank everybody for doing what they do for the city of Saginaw. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, begin by acknowledging the, the students that were here speaking on behalf of the International Hagganese Scholarship Fund. I, I do have three students in the audience that because of some communication breakdown was unable to speak tonight. If you would just take a second and stand up, the students that did not get a chance to speak. And we just want to thank you and, uh, so, so very much, uh, and acknowledge you. And, and look forward to seeing you at the, the ball. So thank you very much. Uh, going down, uh, my list, enough has been said here with the crime-free lease addendum. I don't want to go over that again. Um, for that, uh, you, Mr. Connor, uh, you brought up the fact that we're using somebody outside of the city of Saginaw. Uh, I want to make it perfectly clear, if you pay your parking tickets on time, we don't have to use that agency at all. Uh, we don't have to, and, and, and so I, I just want to make it clear that if you happen to get a parking ticket, if you pay it on time, it comes here to City Hall, is processed, and it's done. It's the collection that is the difficult part. Now, to be good stewards of, of our funds, we bid that out. We bid that out. And the only money that is paid to them is percentage of what is owed to us that we didn't get in the first place. Uh, and so the, the rest of that money does come back, uh, to us. There is a cost for that, and, but that's paid through that fine process. So I, I just want people to be clear on that. Uh, you know, we, we certainly don't like to outsource, but I, we have to be good stewards of a, all the money, and we have to do it a very economical way. Uh, we, we could probably do it in-house, but you would not like to see the fines that we'd have to charge for in-house. Uh, so we, we certainly don't want to go there with that. So, um, I, I just wanted to let you know that. And thank you for staying, by the way, for that, with that. And, uh, um, boy, uh, you know, I think that we, we, we just cannot thank our, our, uh, public safety, whether it's the police officers, the firefighters. In this case, we had a, a fire, and, boy, we just can't thank them up. And, and, um, tonight, we, we, we got a firsthand, uh, uh, emotions about how that affects us, and it affects us every time, every time there's a fire in the city of Saginaw, every time there's a crime in the city of Saginaw, every time there's somebody who cries for help, I don't care if it's an accident, a lost child, these professionals are responding, and they're giving it them all. And we just can't, can't say enough about that, and, and thank, and then, boy, all of a sudden, it, it just strikes home one day, and all of a sudden, it, it's bad. But, uh, listen, uh, I know that the, the Borello family is going to bounce back. Um, I know that we're stronger, we're stronger because of that. I know that's hard to, to visualize sometimes, but we're stronger because of that. And so, we're really, really, very, very proud of, of all our, uh, city employees that are out there, uh, doing, doing their jobs each and every day. So with that, uh, let's, uh, let's, uh, I think I got, uh, okay, I'll, I'll keep my comments for, under the manager's report. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next, uh...
And with that, we are reports of manager.
For those that need to, or request, go ahead, now's a good time. If you're, if you're here for the long vote, if you're here for the crime-free lease of denim, I will announce that is one of the last things we do on this agenda. It has to be one of the last, and I can tell by your face, you're not really excited about that. Uh, but a good loyal citizen to this committee says I'm staying.
My kids haven't eaten.
And that's, rightfully so. Good for them. I hope they're going out somewhere enjoyable.
You can move it up there now.
Well, I'm waiting for the, uh, audience to leave. I want to acknowledge, uh, the return of Betty in the back there. Thank you very much for returning, and don't do that again to us, please, without letting us know that you're not going to be here, so. Councilman Balls, did you have?
How many?
We have it?
No, I'm asking you, how many?
Uh, we need, uh, we'll need five.
Okay. I mean, we know.
And so might Councilman Fitzpatrick. If he feels like he can't stay, he may be leaving, so. Well, I, I, I'll let you know that we need five when it comes time for that vote. We, we need five. If you need, Dan, if you need to go take a little nap, the manager's office has that recliner.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Couch.
So our city manager, let's, uh...
Okay. We have a few things before. We have three presentations this evening, so I wanted to just, um, go through a couple things with council, um, prior to that. And, uh, just a reminder that this Thursday is a citywide meeting that's hosted this week by the Saginaw High Neighborhood Association. Meeting is Thursday, and it's at 1911 Bagley, beginning at 5:30. Tomorrow is the Neighborhood Action Group meeting at noon, um, here in council chambers. And, um, I won't be at that meeting. I'm going to, uh, tomorrow to MML Regional Transportation Presentation that was coordinated by the, uh, Community Foundation. So, uh, that kind of leads me into, um, uh... So that kind of leads me into just a little update on some of the regional activities that are going on and the help from the MML. Also tomorrow, the MML is presenting at the Riverfront Meeting, which is at 5:00 in this room. They're beginning the process for the placemaking, or moving forward the process for the placemaking initiative that they're working on with the city. So they're going to have probably about a half hour to 45-minute presentation at tomorrow's Riverfront Meeting. And I would also mention that today I went to a meeting in Lansing with a number of the other income tax communities. So there will be likely some legislation presented in the next month or so regarding city income taxes that I know one of them, a number of the cities have been working on for several years, but involves universal withholding in the state of Michigan for income tax cities, and also some other, a few other initiatives that we've been lobbying for for a long time now. Whether it gets any farther than introduction, I'll update you more, but hopefully it does get a little bit more traction this time. It's being sponsored by the city of Detroit and Grand Rapids, so bring more back to the council. They'll be looking for support, likely, possibly, something, a letter of support from the mayor and I. So I'll update the council more when we get more information on that. Also, would congratulate the city's green team, who had a good day last week here in council chambers, where they presented information and provided some information about recycling and ways to improve the environment here in council chambers. It was well-attended, and I think we had a lot of volunteers that work on that, so thanks to them for doing that. And finally, leading into our first presentation tonight from our Technical Services Department, we talked about at the strategic planning session, one of the goals from our previous planning session that was conducted by Saginaw Valley State University was image and promoting the downtown area. So a group of people did set up a committee, and we talked about that. Councilman Clock is part of that group, as am I. And they have actually dedicated funding and worked with a marketing firm on how do you promote an area, how do you get more word out? So the area is inclusive of Old Town and the traditional downtown, and there wasn't any desire to have any contrived name for that area, so we just call it Riverfront Saginaw. The city doesn't have a lot of funds, as you all know, to dedicate to this type of activity, but one thing that we have is very talented Technical Services Department. So one of the items in the to-do list was to create a website that promotes the Riverfront Saginaw area and lets people know what there is to do. And that's one of the things that we really need to work on, as I presented to Delta College last year, and presented all of the good things, especially in the riverfront and the downtown area. What I heard often is, we didn't even know that was in Saginaw. So Jeff Klopsick and his team developed a great website, and we wanted to show that to city council tonight. That's really the city's financial and work contribution for this group, and I think Jeff and his staff did a great job. So I'll turn it over to Jeff so he can walk you through this website.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Councilman Fitzpatrick, it's good to see you up there again. Brandon Duval is our web developer. He did this entire site. He unfortunately couldn't be here, so I'm going to present it. I hope I can do it justice, because he's a very talented web developer for the city. He's done the city of Saginaw's. We just redid that website about a year and a half ago. He does the Saginaw Area GIS Authorities website, the Sonar site, Saginaw Online Network of Accessible Records. He does our Intranet. He is working on Light Up the City, new website, and Riverfront Saginaw, which I want to show you today. We put a small design team together that was made up of Tom Miller Jr., Dan Sherman, who is our GIS analyst, Brandon Duval, the web developer, and Paul LaFada, who is our intern from Saginaw Valley. So we had a small team, and we started to look at what other cities municipalities were doing to special zones. We looked at Midtown in Detroit, what they were doing to promote that area, Bricktown in Oklahoma City, Lodo, lower downtown in Denver, French Quarters, New Orleans, and even a really good GoGray.com, which is the Great Lakes Bay Region website. So we kind of took some different ideas from each of those websites, and we put it into the Saginaw Riverfront. So what we're trying to accomplish, we're really trying to show the assets that are available in the downtown and Saginaw Riverfront area. And we wanted to provide useful links, and if you look at our website here, there's four main tabs that we call them. And Mayor, you'll see these are very, look familiar there?
Yes.
Yes, we took those from your speech. Actually, they really summed up what we were looking for in that area, to live, work, play, and learn in the Saginaw Riverfront area. And also, what we've taken, a lot of times when I'm here listening to council speak, is there's so much going on in the Riverfront area and in Saginaw. So we wanted to create an event calendar that showcased that you could go out at any time and find out what was happening in the Saginaw Riverfront, because there are a lot of venues, events, special events through the city of Saginaw. So we wanted to create, as you can see here, an event calendar, so you can just click on any one of these events, and it'll actually take you to the event on the website of the event. And then we wanted to use social media to really promote what was happening, and we wanted to do, using our GIS system, to create a picture story of the Riverfront that shows all the businesses, events, bars, restaurants, and everything. So in each one of these tabs, if you live, say you wanted to come and you wanted to rent, or you wanted to buy property in the city of Saginaw, basically, we're going to list out, and this is just the shell, we still have a lot of filling to do, but you can come in here to rent. We'll have all the places to buy and rent in the Riverfront area. And really, what we're doing is just providing links into the Bancroft site, or whatever it may be. So you're able to access whatever you're looking for in the Saginaw Riverfront off In work, we have a lot of businesses in the Riverfront area, and we also have a large employers in the Saginaw Bay area. So again, we wanted to highlight the AT&amp;T Covenant, St. Mary's, Michigan Works, and we're even Dow Corning and Dow. These are all businesses or corporations that will draw people to the Riverfront area, so we wanted to provide access to each one of these different businesses or places to find employment. And to learn and play, there's so much, so many restaurants, venues, and such in the area. So if you go into our play, we have the Dow, we have First Merit, Temple Theater, Pitt and Balcony, so all these wonderful events that host some great, great different events. So in the calendar, when you're looking at it, you can see on 422, the King and I in the Temple Theater. So again, just by clicking this, it'll take you actually to that event at the Temple Theater and put it showtime. So really, we want to make it kind of one-stop shopping, so you're able to access all this information off of our website. And also, in our GIS system, this is kind of really, this is neat here, what we've did is we actually have a Riverfront map in here, and each one of these points is a different location within the map. So you can look at bars, restaurants, by each one of these tabs, you can click on it, and up will come all the restaurants, all the bars, and all the different venues that are happening. So if you're interested in the Children's Zoo, if you click the Children's Zoo here, up will come a picture of the Children's Zoo and its location of exactly where it's at on your map, or it could be the Celebration Skate Park. And we actually have links into the websites or... Okay, so really what we're trying to do is bring everything together, put it all into one spot, and really showcase all the great things that are happening in the Saginaw Riverfront area. So this is just our shell. We still have a lot of work to do to put into it, to fill it in, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilman, was any questions? Councilwoman Vandermore.
WWW.RiverfrontSaginaw is at the web page.
Was that yet? Well, there's two of them. Right now, it's not available. It's still in testing mode right now.
Okay.
So it isn't available, but it would be WWW.RiverfrontSaginaw or Saginaw Riverfront. Either one would take you to it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, Councilman Tibbs?
I'm sorry, did I miss the when it will be active, or no, no?
We're still working on that. I think the imaging committee, Tim, was working on a rollout, so probably in the next couple of months, is that?
Yeah, I think you'll start to see more activity in the next few months, and then it's really a long-term project, because when you look at the entire Riverfront area and promotion, what we're looking to is wayfinding, that type of signage, and what else can you do to enhance the area, which is... The nice thing about this is you always find out that there's more people working on things than you know about. So when we dig deeper into going into some of the groups, then we find out these other groups are working on similar projects, so we can merge the groups and get more done faster. And I would say we've, that group really started based upon a number of people who have, or a number of corporations and businesses that have a special interest in the Riverfront area. So we do have some very big, big team members in that group, including Dow and Next Year, of course, because Dow's putting their name on the event center, so they want the area promoted, the Saginaw spirit. A number of groups are represented there, so I think this will be a very, a very good process to go through. But you will be hearing more in the next few months, and then I think it'll really ramp up within the next year or so. But Jeff and his staff have worked on this pretty quickly, and I think we do have a budget on that committee, and I believe that this particular part of the project was budgeted for anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000. So I'm really happy that the city could take on that part of the project and contribute to it. So Jeff and his staff, I think, have created a very good website, but we're going to need the business owners in the Riverfront Saginaw area to also contact the city if they want different things promoted on the website, they want their business listed. And I think Jeff demoed this to that group, and we had three of the employers represented there, and they all wanted to be listed first, Dow Covenant and Next Year. So they were very pleased with the website, and I hope council is, too. I can't say enough about how the staff in Technical Services, how good they are at developing these things. They've redone the city website and created it into a mobile app, so they're very experienced. Brandon started here a few years ago and has been really revamping a lot of our websites, and that a lot of people don't know that when Jeff started with the city, they created the GIS system. And the GIS part of Technical Services is really a profit center for the city, and I believe they have contracts with most of the local units in the county to provide that service. So it's a great asset for the city, and I think they did a good job for the project to get this started. Is there any more questions for Jeff?
Any questions anymore? Jeff, as always, thank you very much. What a wonderful, neat thing to happen. We're on the move.
Okay, the second presentation we have is something that we also talked about at our strategic planning session, so it's good to see the things that we talk about in that planning session move on to the next step. Yolanda and Tom Miller Jr. were working on some of the economic activities and ways to spur development and create new business in the city, and they identified a program, I think, is very popular in Detroit and some other cities, and have adapted it for Saginaw. It's called Saginaw Soup, and it's coming up in a little over a week. So Matt Lane and Tom Miller are going to do a short presentation for you about what's coming up.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Browning. So one of the things that we looked at during our strategic planning session, as Jeff Klopsick just said, there's so many things happening in the city of Saginaw that are positive. I've been doing community development in the city of Saginaw for probably 14 years, and the last two years, I think I've seen more activity than I did the previous 14. So one of the things that we identified as part of our strategic plan was something that was missing from the city of Saginaw, specifically an entrepreneurial spirit to try and encourage local people with ideas to grow their businesses organically within the city of Saginaw. And so Detroit has had this successful model in meeting with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We thought it would be good to bring it to Saginaw. It's essentially supposed to be a very laid-back atmosphere. You essentially have, you have a dinner, and you invite anybody that has any idea to come and present their idea to a group of judges. This could be a business idea, or it could be a community improvement initiative, and so I don't want to steal the rest of our thunder, but we'll kind of go through what exactly this is.
So Tom touched on it a little bit, and basically, the Saginaw Soup event itself will be held somewhere in the community at a business. There will be a cover charge at the front door, which is kind of the seed money that we build up to give to the winner at the end of the voting period. There's a panel of volunteers from the community, so business people, folks from the media, councilmembers, if you'd like. And at the end, after all of the presentations are given, you vote on the best one, and that's who gets the money.
So not only, I mean, it's supposed to create a spirit of bringing ideas to one central location and a sort of a platform for people to share those ideas with folks in the room, but it's not specifically just about the $500 or $1,000 that they win. The idea is that, so we get all of these ideas in the room, five to 10 ideas, and any idea that we have probably needs some help moving forward. So we're going to hook whoever has an idea, whether they're a winner or not, them up with any of the various agencies that we know that can help to move their project forward. We got a couple of nonprofit ideas so far, which I don't think we expected completely, but we're already brainstorming with other nonprofit groups that are doing similar-type work that we could set them up with as a mentor. This is expanding upon something that we did, something we kind of came up with last year, which is the Business Mentorship Program, where we're taking folks with business ideas. I just met with Rita's Cafe this past week. And we're taking folks that are professionals, that have been in business for a long time in Saginaw, whether they're attorneys, or accountants, or builders, could be even a manufacturer, that have agreed to volunteer and sort of helped to guide these folks through the first couple of years of business, because we all know that when you first start a business, the most precarious time is the first couple of years, and that's when a lot of businesses go out of business. So we think if we could take these experts that have gone through some of the same problems that these folks are going to face, we can help them to be more successful. We're also going to hook them up with the SEDC, so potentially, there might be a loan, you know, to help move the project forward, as well as some banks. We've already talked with a number of banks that are potentially interested in helping to fund these projects. to fund these projects.
So everyone should have this little flyer that we came... That we are handing out to you. And this was actually created by a Saginaw Career Complex student. And so this is our first flyer for the first soup. And this is when it's gonna be. It's gonna be April 29th at 5:00 PM at Woody's Drafthouse. Tom was nice enough to offer up his space, $10 admission, a five-minute pitch from the presenters, followed by five minutes of question and answer between the panel and the presenters. All ideas are welcome, like Tom said. Our original deadline was last Wednesday, but we decided to, for the first time, just extend it for a week. So Wednesday is the day, the 22nd. SaginawSoup@Saginaw-MI.com. So if you know anybody that has an idea, send them there.
I just wanted to add a caveat. We're having it at the bar that I own, and I volunteered to be the guinea pig. And I'm not making money off of this. I'm donating the pizza and the space for free, so in case anybody, you know, at MLive we're gonna write an article. This is a donation of in-kind services. And the idea was, we don't have any money yet, although we have had offers now from two... One individual and one lending institution that would like to help pre-seed this project. But the thought was that we could use all of the money that we get at the door to give to the prizes instead of paying for food. So that's kind of what we came up with. How you can help? Well, we want to spread the word. So you've probably heard the commercials, maybe, if you're driving around in your car this weekend. But we need volunteers who could donate. We're gonna have maybe some door prizes for people to attend, invite people to come. We're also going to be having judges, so Councilman Balls. We kind of drafted Councilman Balls as one of our first panelists because he sort of has expressed, at least we all felt on council, a desire to help increase business in the city of Saginaw. So the idea is to... We've also asked our friend from MLive to be a judge as well. The idea is we'd like to get a sort of celebrity judges and judges that have some experience in business to help promote the event. And it's kind of fun. It's supposed to be lighthearted. It's not supposed to be... People are not supposed to be afraid to come up there and present even crazy ideas. And it's supposed to be very sort of a fun activity. We're gonna try and do this quarterly, although we're already getting requests to do this monthly. So we'll see how that settles out in the end.
So as you guys heard on your January strategic planning sessions, this was just kind of an idea at first that Yolanda and Tom kind of brought to you. And we kind of put together this team to kind of work on the first session and really get everything together. So Yolanda Jones is one of our team members, Tom Miller, John Stempel, Kenneth Franklin, Shante Bibbs, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, and myself. We're all on this team together, working hard to kind of put all this stuff in place. And we've actually had a lot of interest from Saginaw Valley State University professors and students to help us. So we're gonna take them up on their offer to set up, clean up, whatever they can do to help out there. And like I said before, SCC student created the flyer, and we'll probably do something like that for all of the soups as well.
I think that's it. Questions? Tom, to start with, I did talk about this at last Monday's Ask the Mayor segment. Very good. And I'm very pleased that my co-partner sitting alongside me used this same in Detroit and had been through it, and very successful. How in the world did you ever come up with pizza for soup, though? I'm not sure. Because down there, they actually serve soup, so...
Well, it was free, and I was buying. So I can't make soup, but we can make pizza.
Enough of this. This is our Saginaw Soup-Pizza.
That's right.
I love this. Councilmember... Is Councilman Balls a business or a celebrity? I'm not...
Celebrity.
And I wish you wouldn't have said that, because... Well, enough, it's already been said, so thank you very much. Any other councilman comments? Go ahead. I know, but I called upon you, Councilman.
I was gonna suggest Don Goodrow's back there. If she still makes soup, maybe...
I'm telling you. And maybe she'll donate the soup.
Well, the idea is like, so the first one is at my place because it's free. But the next one, we would patronize a local business.
There you go.
And then we had actually buy, purchase some goods and services from a local business.
That's great.
That's a good point.
Yeah, very good. Okay. You all set? Councilwoman Brenda Moore, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, why can't we change the first one to pizza then? Because when I hear soup, I think I'm gonna go get some soup for $10. I'll get pizza for 10, but...
I think that the reference is into, you know, like, everybody brings an idea and they put it in a pot.
Stir the pot.
So we can put water in it and make soup.
$10 worth of soup?
No, I'm not even gonna use it.
I had a bowl of it the other day. I think it was a cup for $10 bucks. Okay. Anybody else? Hang on, sir. I want to give you due respect here.
No, you're not doing that, sir.
I want it cleared completely. Okay. Councilman Balls, celebrity Balls?
I just wanted to make a comment. They have nothing to do with this. I just wanted to say that Matt is a Big Brother, too. I just want anybody to know that Matt is in the Big Brother program, too. So thank you, Matt, for serving.
I see why he...
Thank you.
I see why he's like... Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, we do have interest already. We have like nine or 10 applicants. So I think the first one's gonna be really good, and there's a lot of great ideas, too.
Do you have a screening process that they go through with the applicant?
Yep, yep. We'll get them in, and we'll...
There's a screening process, so, you know...
Yep, the committee will look at them.
Where do they call to apply?
You go to saginawsoup@Saginaw-MI.com.
So we have a link on our website?
I believe we do.
Do we have a link on our website? Yes, we do.
The other thing to mention is that from 5:00 to 6:00, we start networking hours. You have to go early, and the program begins at 6:00.
And how many different flavors of beer are there?
59.
59. Thank you very much. Yes, that's... I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt and Tom and Yolanda. It's good to see that's the second item that we talked about at our strategic planning session in January that's progressing. And another area that we have talked about at strategic planning sessions, and even before that, we always talk about looking at the way that we do business, and how can we do things more efficiently? How can we save money? And Phil Carwatt, Director of Public Services, has been looking at recycling and yard waste for probably at least the last six months. And the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority did bid out that service, and I think that several people were very surprised at the bids that came back. And this is a substantial increase for the city of Saginaw. And in order to not pass along such a drastic increase to the residents of the city, Phil and his staff started looking at alternatives. So we think we have a very good alternative that is something that his staff can do. So Phil, take your way.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everyone. As Tim stated, and being the Public Service Director, I'm constantly looking at opportunities for savings. You've seen many presentations where we've talked about energy efficiency, natural gas choice, street light retrofits to save money that can free it up for other useful opportunities. And as Tim stated, I think everybody's aware that our contract with Mid-Michigan Waste for their services expired December of '14. And because of some of the high bids, you know, everybody was pretty upset with that. We somehow ended up getting a one-year extension, which will expire the end of this year. So the authority right now is currently working on trying to get everybody to sign in and approve on some new contracts. But as I look deeper at the numbers, Mid-Michigan Waste provides three services for the city, basically under its solid waste and rubbish, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But the three services they provide are trash collection and disposal, recycling and yard waste. The trash collection, as we all know, has a heavy user, so there's heavy costs in there. But we all know that in the recycling and yard waste that I feel there's a low enough volume where it might be better financially for the city to bring that service back in-house. So with that, I have a pretty lengthy presentation. I'll try to get through it quick, pop through some of the slides. I mean, the long and short of it is, I'm gonna give you a presentation that hopefully at the end of it, you will understand that if we bring this back in-house, just the yard waste and the recycling, we can save on average about $300,000 a year. Over 10 years, that's over $3 million. But with this opportunity, I thought I'd educate you a little bit more as to the rubbish fund, the services that are provided within it, a little bit about Mid-Michigan Waste Authority. So there's a lot of numbers in this presentation. Some may even be duplicate, but again, I'm a numbers guy, and I'm just trying to hammer home, you know, the dollars behind all this, so... Basically, rubbish service. What is rubbish service? The city of Saginaw provides, through Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, solid waste collection and disposal, which is basically trash. That service is provided weekly, disposal of up to 20 bags and/or cans and two bulk items. And on average, through the numbers that we track, the city of Saginaw with its current house count, basically disposes of about 16,500 tons of trash a year. We do also offer recycling, which began again in the spring of 2012 through Mid-Michigan Waste. That was a service that we added when we changed the fee structure from a milled in a $50 flat fee over to just the household rubbish fee. That's offered bi-weekly. The city of Saginaw is one of the lowest as far as diversion rate goes. We track it by diversion, not by actual household participation. But the city of Saginaw is the lowest diversion rate member of the authority. We divert less than 5% of our trash to recycling, which, you know, is below 1,000 ton. Yard waste, there's weekly collection of yard waste. That's offered April 1st through November 30th. The city of Saginaw does not pay for disposal of yard waste because we own and operate our own compost facility. So all the other members as part of the authority have to pay a fee to dispose of their yard waste. Number of the services provided by Mid-Michigan Waste. The services as part of the rubbish fee that are provided by the city is brush collection. The city does provide monthly collection of one pile per household. An additional collection can be provided, depending on if there's storm events or a special need. That service is also offered April 1st through November 30th. The city also, as part of the fee, operates a convenience station, second Saturday of every month, between 10:00 and 2:00. It's an opportunity for city residents to bring those items that they were otherwise unable to dispose of to the compost facility here at 1435 South Washington, the public service building, and we handle that. Compost site, we own and operate a compost site out on Vets Memorial Parkway. That's where offers compost and wood chips free of charge for city residents and is available to the surrounding areas for a cost. The site is open between April 1st and November 30th, and its hours of operation are from 7:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and we are open on Saturdays, 7:00 AM to noon. And on average, we handle about 40,000 yards of yard waste material a year. Now, that's accumulated. There's about 25,000 yards that come in through the authority. It used to be over 30, but as the population and that... And we see the users of it are going down. But the city is somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000, depending on the... We also offer environmental collection. That operation is overseen by John Stempel. It's a collection of downtown Old Town West Side Business District and park solid waste, removal of spills and debris from city streets, and inspection and issuing of citations for violations of city ordinances, curb violations, and rear-lot cleanups. And that service takes place year-round. Little bit of history on Mid-Michigan Waste. I'm not gonna go through all this, but basically, it began many years ago, 1991. By 1995, Mid-Michigan Waste Authority had 12 members. They currently have 35. And as I said earlier, we currently utilize the authority for the three services, trash collection and disposal, recycling, and yard waste. Here's just a list of the current members. As I said, there's 35 of them. Each member appoints a trustee to Mid-Michigan Waste Authority's board. Their service contracts and programs are approved by the board. The city of Saginaw currently, based on its existing house count of 19,356, and just so everybody knows, that's actually units. Our solid waste collection, we're responsible for handling four units and less. Anything greater than, you know, five units or more, they do not participate in this program, per our ordinance and also per our contract with Mid-Michigan Waste. So these are specifically four units and less. But there's really about 17,500 parcels that make up the 19,356 units. We're billed by the unit. So there are, you know, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. So anything up to a quadplex would be part of our solid waste services. So with that 19,356 house count, that is over 27% of the total authority, which has 70,188 units. Saginaw Township is second, with 12,718 units. As I said earlier, we're on page 5 now. You guys got two on one. I was trying to save paper. There's 40 pages, so bear with me here. Hopefully I can keep you all... I'll try to make this exciting and get through it. As I said earlier, the city of Saginaw, prior to 2013, actually provided all of these services in-house with their own crews, with their own equipment. And then at some point, we determined that, you know, based on being a member of the authority, you can take advantage of, you know, many opportunities for lower pricing because of the number of participants in that. So we basically sold all of our equipment and, for the most part, transferred... A lot of our employees actually went to work for waste management, who was the vendor for Mid-Michigan Waste Authority for these services. So pretty much, we were under a 10-year contract that expired December 31st of '14. We entered into a one-year extension, which we're currently in. That's gonna expire December of 2015. And all of their fees associated include collection, disposal, administrative fuel, and there's also landfill surcharge fees associated with that. This is basically a map, just showing you kind of the collection zones and the dates. I know it's probably kind of small on yours, but if anybody's interested, I can get you a larger map of this. And it kind of coincides also with the recycling, but depending on which zone you're in, it's every other week, so it varies. But all that information is available on the city of Saginaw website, or you can contact our office. This graphical, what I'm trying to depict here, is kind of some historical information going back to 2005. And it's basically just Mid-Michigan Waste Association's costs per household, not including the city of Saginaw services. As you'll see later in this presentation, our current operation's about $4 million. But of that, the authority in itself is like 2.2 to 2.4 million. So all the services I listed prior that the city provides make up that additional 1.5 to 1.6 million of the total costs. But as you can see, back in 2005, when we first entered into an agreement with Mid-Michigan Waste, our actual costs were $80 per house per year. And where we're at right now in the current year, the estimated cost is $117.70. Now, there's sometimes a variation in the estimated cost between the actual, because throughout the year, the house count gets lower, and then if your volume of trash and/or recycling fluctuates, there's some differences in what's actually estimated versus what it actually ends up costing us at the end of the year. But as you can see, I mean, in 2015, of our current $175 house fee, almost $120 of that goes just to the authority directly. And then, as I said earlier, the current contract, the extension's due to expire December of this year. So beginning January 1st, 2016, the city of Saginaw, as a member of the authority, is being asked to enter into another 10-year agreement with Mid-Michigan Waste Association, which, when I looked at the numbers, I was very fearful of that, at least for yard waste and recycling. So we started taking a look at, is there any other way that we can provide this service and save the city of Saginaw and its residents money as it relates to its household rubbish fee? This contract would include the same number and levels of service for solid waste, recycling, and yard waste. The same fee structure would also be in place, working off of a house count and not participation use. So we all know, and I have the numbers behind showing that the city of Saginaw has a very low recycling participation rate. And I also feel that the yard waste participation rate coincides with that. I mean, there's gonna be fluctuation, I think, in the spring and in the fall. You might have high levels of use. But we used to pick up the leaves along the curbside anyway, so we'd be... anyway, so we'd just be bringing that service back in-house. We wouldn't be doing the curbside, but we would be doing it, picking it up in the bags and the containers. The collection fees through Mid-Michigan Waste, if there's no change, within the first year of the contract, would be approximately a 16% increase from the one-year extension we're currently in, and then throughout the next nine years, the annual increase rate will be between 2% and 3.4%. So once again, it's just another chart. The previous chart showed you what the per-house count would be annually, just for Mid-Michigan Waste Services. Now, this is their cost, beginning in a contract if we signed it with them from 2015, and then you can see all the way through 2025 with no changes at their increased rates on page 9. By 2025, we would be paying the authority almost $3 million, which is, you can see the incremental annual increases over the 10 years, but at the end of 10 years, that would be a total increase of $680,000. And then, you know, we'd be looking at signing another contract from that point. So at this point, that would all have to be a direct increase in the household rubbish fee, so. And if you take that and divide it by 19,356, it's about an extra $35. So right now, at $175, which you'll see later on, which right now isn't even enough to cover the services, because this year, we're looking at a gap of about $300,000 and trying to fund that. But that would be, that would basically take your fee from $175 now to over $210 by 2025 to cover that deficit if no changes are made. Just a little bit more to talk about the rubbish fund revenues. The $175 rubbish fee assessed per house count is just a portion, and it's the major portion of that. I think that fee alone brings in 3.3 million or so of the total revenues. The total revenues that are estimated to come in in fiscal year 2016 are $3.64, $3,649,940. The other types of revenue that come in with that are revenues through sale at the compost site, tipping fees at the compost site, environmental cleanups through inspections, and then there's also a negative revenue value that comes back in the form of a chargeback. Now, I'm not too, I'm not the best person to speak about that, because I've been learning mostly about that the last couple of weeks on my own. But basically, the county chargeback is an expense that is in the revenue account. The negative value is based on unpaid fees and special assessments related to the rubbish fund. The county will write a check for unpaid debts each year and has several years to attempt to collect the debt themselves. If the debts are unable to be collected, the fees are then charged back to the city. So that's basically anytime we write up a property for a citation and do cleanups, if they do not pay their bills, it goes onto their special assessment tax roll, and if it doesn't get paid that way, then the county buys it. And that's, this year, estimated to be, I think, over $100,000 for our, so it's a negative value against the fund. This is just another graphical depiction of the dollars I just gave you as far as the revenue goes. So for fiscal year 16, we're anticipating the revenues to be just under $3.7 million. This is kind of a pie chart to show you the overall fund in itself. And as you can see, over 92% of the revenues that come into the rubbish fund are from the fee, the $175 fee. Compost dump fees and sales is almost 8%. There's others in there. That's the curbside collection, the rear lot cleanups that get paid make up about 2.6%. And then the negative value, that's actually taken away from the revenue, from the chargeback. Now, we're on to expenditures, which include legacy costs and other unfunded MERS. The total estimated expenditures for fiscal year 16 is about $4 million. And then here is a graphical depiction on page 14 of your presentation that shows you all the services that are part of the fund. There's obviously administration, that's both Mid-Michigan Waste Authority and the city. Then the solid waste collection, which is mostly Mid-Michigan Waste, yard waste, which is all Mid-Michigan Waste, recycling, which is all Mid-Michigan Waste. Then the brush collection at $212,000 is the City of Saginaw's curbside compost site operations, the convenience station, that's basically the annual cost to run the convenience station. Then the environmental enforcement side, that's your curb violations, your cleanups. And then the legacy costs, as you can all see, the legacy costs themselves, right around $400,000, is almost 10% of the overall fund, which equates somewhere around a $20 cost as part of that $175 fee I can't even use, that goes straight to legacy cost. Then this again is just a pie chart, graphical depiction of the expenditures proposed for fiscal year 16 that I just went over to you, so you can kind of see in percentage-wise the overall operation of the rubbish fund. Projected deficit, as I said earlier, our gap analysis, obviously, you operate with revenue and then you operate with expenditures, and your first thing is to try to figure out any way to be most efficient and keep your costs down. And then the second thing is, you've got to try to find the revenue to provide them services that you feel you might be able to find that for. And where we're at right now, you know, with about a $4 million expenditure and only 3.6 or 3.7 million in revenue, we're working in a $300,000 deficit. So how do we cover that? What can we do? So that was another reason why I really started looking at, is there any other means or methods to provide this service without staying with the authority for it? This slide shows the costs per household for each service. So if you wanted to break it down that way, and then revenue from that service generates and have been removed, so this is basically just showing you the overall true cost for expenditures on page 17, but it didn't take into account the revenue that we bring in, like the $268,000 in compost sale or tipping fees and all that. It's just to show you the true costs of service. Right now, we really need to be looking at collecting $192 through a household rubbish fee if we didn't have any other means to collect revenue. So it's just kind of another depiction to show you where we're at financially and then the overall makeup. So if you broke it down and you wanted to know, hey, is this a service we need to continue to provide, and what is the cost associated with that per house, this shows you that. So for instance, every year for the City of Saginaw to provide environmental enforcement, every household would need to pay $10.20. And, you know, for Mid-Michigan Waste Association Services, their per-household count right now is right around $120. I think a lot of people ask and would like to see, you know, what $175, how do we compare to other communities? So we did put some analysis together and looked at what other communities are charging for their services now. It's very difficult to give you an apple to apple, because I don't know what other communities' legacy costs are, you know what I mean? And talking to Saginaw Township and Thomas Township, when I mentioned that once, they were like, well, what's that? I mean, you know, I don't know that a lot of people understand. I mean, you know, it's the situation we're in, but we're in it. But, so if you look at Saginaw Township's fee of $125, I mean, I don't, I don't think that has any legacy costs in it, so that's just the true providing of the service. I mean, I don't know what else a lot of them offer as far as it relates to, we have a compost site, our environmental is a part of it, you know, the curbside monthly collection for brush. So Saginaw, for what you get, I think, when we look at all these other communities, there's more services for the fee that you're paying. But as you can see, we are not the highest. Farmington Hills, Farmington's at 209, Battle Creek's at 192, Lansing's similar to Saginaw, and then Bay City and Saginaw Township. Once again, as I told you, there's probably going to be duplicate and triplet of numbers, because I really want you, you guys all to understand the situation we're in. So here's the rubbish fund fiscal 16 overview again. The projected revenue's 3.649. This is on page 19. The expenditures are at $3,996,000, so our projected gap or deficit right now is $346,000. So proposal, just to give you a little background, even a couple, three, four years ago, when I first took over as the director of the department, and I started delving into this rubbish fund, one of the things I looked at was, we have been the disposal site at our compost facility for Mid-Michigan Waste since 1994. In 1994, there was a fee established for every one yard of yard waste you dispose of, we will charge you $6.50. It is now 2015, last I checked, which is many years after, and up until about three or four years ago, I don't know that they've ever been approached about increasing that fee. So one way I took a look at also increasing fees was, I made a recommendation to the board that that fee is too low. Just so you know, we charge independents, your landscape companies, for every one yard of material they dispose of, it's $14. So I made a recommendation to the board that we increase the tipping fee from $6.50 to $8.50, and it was going to be over a two-year period, so it wouldn't be as detrimental in any one given year. So in 2013, the fee went from $6.50 to $7.50, and in 2014, it went from $7.50 to $8.50. So if you look at about 25,000 yards of material being brought in by the authority, that's a $50,000 increase in revenue. So that was another way to bring in more revenue to try to offset some costs. And then, these are the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority proposal for its estimated fees based on the service provided, beginning January 1st. And as you can see, solid waste collection is going to be $1,659,215. Recycling, $434,000 to recycle Saginaw, 19,356 units, less than a 5% diversion rate. Seems like a lot of money to me. Yard waste, $349,000. So this was one of the ones, I done some delving into it, and I honestly feel Saginaw, we're proposing to use two trucks and two people, but I honestly feel we'll be able to collect the city's recycling, because it's bi-weekly, with one truck, one person, so. And I'm going to get into that a little bit more. So their overall beginning cost, January 1st, 2016, would be $2,443,000. And then go up, then they would go up incrementally, as I stated earlier, between 2% and 4%. Here's a chart showing you, based on the proposed increases, the Mid-Michigan Waste cost per household is shown over time. There is an increase of over $30 in the cost per household over the proposed 10-year contract. By 2025, assuming there is no increase in the $175 household fee, there will only be $36.93 per household for all the other services offered by the city, which won't be enough. That was the environmental, that's the compost site. We're on page 23 now. This here now is a proposal from Mid-Michigan Waste backing out yard waste and recycling. So this would be the cost if Saginaw then found a different way to provide that service. So as you can see, it's, the base increases, so this is just going to be, at this point right now, I haven't looked at providing the trash collection service any other way. It's basically, you know, hey, we're going to enter into an agreement with Mid-Michigan Waste Authority and whoever their vendor's going to be. So these are going to be the unavoidable expenses that we're going to incur already anyway. So as you can see, by the end of 2025, based on their annual increases, there's going to be a $406,000 increase, which is basically going to have to go to part of the fee. So as you can see annually, as that, as that charge is going up, $94,000, $22,000, $28,000, unless there's any other way to decrease expenses or increase revenue, that would have to be absorbed within the fee itself. So at this point, those are unavoidable expenses that are just going to occur. Similar to the contractor in right now, if you go back pages in, I mean, what we pay now is half a million or more than what we paid 10 years ago, and so it's kind of just been that same process. Recycling. The city has a limited users of recycling, and the cost for Mid-Michigan Waste to continue these services are steadily rising. The recycling, our recycling trucks, what we're proposing and working with our IS department, and Jeff Klopsak and his team, who have been very helpful, are going to be to track the data. I mean, we're going to put devices in the trucks, so I know that there's limited users, and you can say that, and what I've been doing the last three or four months is, every morning that I get an opportunity, as I come in, I try to drive the route that collection is being provided on, and just look, who's putting out recycling? Who's putting out yard waste? I see it, we know it, don't go on, you've seen the numbers, less than 1,000 tons of recycling a year with over, almost 17,000 tons of trash. So we're going to have a device mounted in each truck, and we're going to be able to map and track who actually is putting it out, so that over, you know, about a one-year time, we will be able to set our routes to go in the days that the service is provided, and just drive the streets that you need to, to pick up who's actually putting the yard waste or the trash out. Now, there might be that individual or several individuals that that day, even though they haven't done it for a year, decide, hey, I want to put my stuff out today, and that's fine, but what will happen is, we probably won't drive that road planned, because they haven't put it out all year, and we have that data, but we will go back and pick it up under a phone call. We'll have the ability to, no different than what waste management does right now, if there's a complaint. Your trash, everything has to be out by 7:00 AM or whatever, you know, the day of collection. We'll actually be able to document and say, hey, whether or not that was put out, should we go back and pick that up? And that, that'll just save you miles and wear and tear in fuel and everything else on your vehicles. Back in 2012, when we actually re-instituted and implemented recycling, I think you all remember, it was the spring of 2012, the City of Saginaw purchased almost 8,000 recycling bins of 18-gallon containers, and we did a huge social media, you know, public outreach to try to get these out, both with the City of Saginaw resources and also Mid-Michigan Waste Association resources, to try to get them out and educate. There was huge pushes. And we basically gave the first bin, anybody who wanted to recycle, you could come to either City Hall or the public service building, and, you know, we'd track it by address and owner, and you could get your first recycling bin for free, and then everyone after that was just at our cost. But in doing that, once again, we worked with IS, and this is a map, basically, and I know you can't see it on here, but we can make it accessible, that we put a dot every place for the individuals that picked up a bin. Now, I'd like to think that somebody who picked up a bin is actually using that bin, but I don't know that that's the case either. So, and that's just based on our, you know, 5% diversion. I mean, there's over 21% of the population or the units picked up bins. So of the 19,356 units, there are roughly just over 40-some-hundred bins that were actually picked up and/or purchased, recycled containers. And I hope everybody now knows that, as of January 1st, we're up to single stream, you no longer have to sort, you have to put the proper material in the bin. You can use a 33-gallon or less-sized container, it has to have an R painted on it or a recycling sticker. You can still use the bins, but as of January 1st this year, that we're offering that service as well. All right, so this chart here basically depicts our costs. We've been working on this, as the city manager said, for probably at least four months. And I mean, we've got spreadsheets and charts and data, pretty much that can back this up, support it really well. We feel we can provide in-house recycling annually to start, and now, keep in mind, we're recommending purchase of four vehicles. We're going to, you know, probably borrow money over 10 years, five to 10 years to pay for that, so that'll be part of that, our new budget. But we're looking at right, just under $350,000 to provide that same service compared to Mid-Michigan Waste Authority's fees of $434,000. That's a savings of almost $90,000 a year. These charts, just delving into the detail, was an opportunity for me to give to you the breakdown of how we came up with them costs, but I'm not going to go through them unless you would like me to. So that was the first sheet. On page 27 was the positions to provide the service, and then page 28 is the actual equipment, the total cost of that equipment annually. We're on page 29 now. These are just some more costs, in-house, computer equipment, fuel, we took into consideration. Now, these are the huge numbers. If you just look at recycling alone on page 30, and what our numbers are showing, based on our estimated annual savings in the first year of $90,000, if you look after 2025, recycling alone, it's estimated, by bringing it in-house, we're going to save over $1.4 million. So compared to what Mid-Michigan Waste's fees for that same 10-year period. I know this is a lot of material, guys. We're almost done. Onto yard waste. Similar to recycling, we're also proposing to bring yard waste back in-house. As I stated earlier, I mean, up until three, I think, three or four years ago now, we used to actually have the equipment, that's well over 30 years, and we'd collect the leaves in the fall anyhow. the leaves in the fall anyhow, via equipment, you could rake them into the curb. We will not be providing that, but we'll, we'll be recommending picking it up, similar to Waste Management does now, to just be with city of Saginaw staff and city of Saginaw equipment and vehicles. This chart here on page thirty-two, basically similar to the recycling, in-house annual cost analysis, we feel we can provide yard waste collection, and remember that that's pretty much only for, what is it, eight months, April through November? So, it is not year-round, but for about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars compared to Mid-Michigan Waste Authority's three hundred and fifty thousand. So, that, again, is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars savings a year, or almost seven dollars per house, if you broke it down, per household, so. And then again, I gave you some detail on the employee costs on page thirty-three. Page thirty-four gives you what we're proposing for equipment, and equipment costs, and then there's some operational expenses by bringing yard waste back in-house on page thirty-five. And then if you go to page thirty-six, the table above shows the Mid-Michigan Waste Association yard waste costs for the next ten years. There's a steady rise in the costs, with, like I said earlier, the basic, first year there's, you know, ten percent or greater, but then it'll be two to four percent every year thereafter. But, this is for yard waste, similar to the recycling, so I said, bringing recycling back in-house would've been right around one point three million, plus the one point seven million in yard waste. So, you're looking at, you know, three million or more savings over ten years with, with our proposal for bringing this service back with, in the, in-house with city of Saginaw And there's your number there. So, Mid-Michigan Waste costs, in-house costs, and then again, right around three point. And I feel, we feel our numbers are conservative, we actually think we can do better than that. We wanted to err on the, you know, on the low side, not the high side, so we're hoping we can be aggressive, and obviously, it's gonna be a learning process, it's been well over ten years. But, our streets foreman used to actually work on the, the rubbish crew, so very familiar with that service. Our plan would be to continue the pickups on the same days, the same type of schedule, be as efficient or more efficient, and what we're proposing to do is have everything, the staffing, we'd have to hire four people and purchase four trucks, and have all that in place, obviously, for recycling. If we're gonna begin January first, two thousand sixteen, I'm gonna need to have all this stuff in place, October, November at the latest, so we can make sure everything's up and running for the recycling portion of it, and then obviously, yard waste. We will not take that out until April first of sixteen, so it'd be nice to get all that in, you know, even before the recycling, but then, we definitely by January or February of two thousand sixteen have to have all the equipment and staffing onboard for, to bring the yard waste in as of April first, two thousand sixteen. I won't go through this, but I learned all this from Ms. Jones and her Office of Management and Budget with the SWOT analysis. We had to take a look at some strengths, weaknesses, opportunity, and threats. I will not read them, but they're there for your viewing, as you wish. And then again, just some more numbers, like I said, this is probably the fifth time you've seen some numbers. But anyway, long story short, we feel by bringing that service portion in-house, yard waste and recycling, will save the city of Saginaw and its residents substantial amount of money. It'll give me more headaches, give my staff more headaches, but that's fine, 'cause that's what we do. It's easy just to get a piece of paper and sign it and say it's fine, but at this point, I, I couldn't live with that, and increase in, in what I estimate the fees to be. So, that's what our proposal's gonna do, and we're gonna make that part of our sixteen budget. With that, if there's any questions?
Mr. Chris Patrick.
Thanks, Phil. You know, the, we've had various presentations, I think one of the things had to do with Mid-Michigan, bringing in new kinds of bins that would be, you know, lifted up by the truck, and I think that's, is that a one person?
Yeah, that would be a one, but all the other vehicles they operate now, they're the front loads, they're either the side loads or the front loads, and they only operate them with one person as well.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So, okay, so the, right now, the, the recycling is only one person?
Correct, one person, one truck.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I never really looked to see what they're doing. So, would you have to have us, would we get a different kind of truck?
Our first recommendation proposal was gonna be to buy two new trucks, two used. And if you can think about, we were gonna get one brand-new recycling truck, it was gonna be just for recycling. It's a smaller truck, it'd be a side-load unit, one person, you're on the, you drive on the right side of the truck, you get off, you load it on the side. But as we've been talking and about this whole process, we can envision at times, we'll probably have the need of three, possibly even four trucks at one time to do the yard waste, and that would be seasonal, and what I'm saying is, is that, I know that probably, depending on the winter, I mean, Mother Nature, sometimes we have snow into May, there wouldn't be a lot of yard waste being put out April first if there's snow, but if there is, I'm figuring that first two to four weeks of the spring, and then that last month, month and a half of fall, where it's probably gonna be our biggest use. So, as we talked about it, we said, you know what, it probably doesn't make sense to just buy a single truck designated for recycling, because I may have the need to use that for yard waste. So, we got away from that. So, now we're proposing to buy all, two brand-new, two used. The front load, the bucket on the front lifts up and dumps into the top back, and the purpose of that is, I can envision, depending on the area of the city, that, once we start running these routes, the recycle truck, 'cause it's bi-weekly, and there's only three hundred miles of road, so you got six hundred curb miles, but I can envision going out, he may be able to get the recycling, whatever day that is, in less than an hour.
Really?
So, hour or two, depending on where you're at, I mean, if you get an opportunity and you drive, and you see the actual participation, it's extremely low. If our participation rate was higher, Saginaw Township, I would not be standing in front of you here recommending this. I could not do it, but knowing that our participation rate is so low, I feel confident in the fact that we can do it, because I don't see that, I mean, if that all of a sudden doubled or tripled or quadrupled, then I, you know, I mean, we got three hundred thousand dollars a year to work with, which is enough to add a couple more trucks and a couple more people just to make it break even. So, I got a lot of ability for error, which I feel there is none right now. So, if our, what I mean by that is, if our participation rate was higher, I'd need more people, more equipment to pick it up. But knowing I can run one truck, one person, for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so, we got away from the single-source recycling truck. We're gonna now, I think, buy the four that can be used, I mean, they can be used vice-versa, we'll just have to make sure we keep it clean. So, if we get it out and we use it for yard waste, once we dump it that night, we'll have to make sure we get it power washed and cleaned, and ready to go the next morning for recycling.
Another question now, are you ready to go by January first, two thousand sixteen? Would you be ready to go with this plan?
Yes, yes, we're, after this meeting, and I, I brought it out and showed you, my next step's gonna be to, I'm already working with Human Services Department, I know job descriptions, we used to have them, we used to do it, I'm gonna pull them up, I'm gonna freshen them up, gonna work with their office to get the positions posted, I'm gonna work with Office of Management and Budget to come up with the financing package for the equipment, try to get people hired, you know, hopefully by November, December at the latest, so we can get them trained. You know, there's gonna be some inefficiencies, I feel, to start, because they're gonna have to learn the routes. But once they learn the routes, you know, we have, we used to run it, we got the old route maps, and then by using the technology for tracking, who's actually utilizing the service, we're, we're gonna kinda use that tool to help modify our routes. But, and then I don't know, Councilman, if you were getting into asking the question, but you were talking about when they brought them bins, and that was right around the time where we were looking at going into a new contract, and you had the ninety-gallon, the sixty-gallon, the thirty-gallon, it was gonna be, you know, the guy didn't even have to touch them, the forks would pick it and lift it, but as the city manager stated, when we had, when they received those bids, the prices per municipality went up anywhere from twenty-five to over a hundred and twelve percent, meaning, more than doubled. So, like, if you saw the numbers up there right now, we pay Mid-Michigan Waste Authority two point two million this year for their services, that could've been four point four million as of January first, two thousand fifteen, so the whole board and the authority was all under the assumptions that that was gonna be cheaper, because it was gonna save on your, your insurance for your people getting hurt by throwing and lifting the bags, and we thought the cost would all go down, but when they literally went out for bid, and there were two people that bid it, Waste Management and Republic, the numbers just, they came in through the roof. So, our hands were kinda tied at that point. We did try to get with some other service providers, I think Granger was one of them, and there was another one, but a lot of them aren't sized, you know, there's too many miles they'd have to drive, they don't have any facilities within this area that would make it conducive for them, for those kinda costs, to provide that service to Saginaw. So, that's when we all started shuffling, and then we got that one-year extension, where we worked with Waste Management, which was great, you know, they worked with us to keep their increase in fees minimal, although there was slightly some for the current year we're in, but they're not gonna work under an extension forever, because they have capital needs and everything else, you know, like we're gonna have. I mean, they're, I think that most of their trucks are all old, ten to fifteen years, and that's why a lot of people wanna go to the ten-year contract, 'cause they have to be able to amortize all of that capital over that time period, so, you know, they can't lock you into a two- or four-year contract, and then yet they got equipment they have to pay for, and then you back out of a service, they would have no means of paying for some of that equipment. Thank you.
Councilman Tibbs?
So, residents will see a seven-dollar decrease in their trash pickup?
No, as I said, right now, the hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar fee isn't enough.
Okay.
But I've been trying to manage this, and I don't think, you know, we're always trying to keep our costs down to our residents, so I'm, we're, if, if you looked at it, just based on Mid-Michigan's Waste estimated costs for services, and as I said earlier, I mean, I get a sheet every year that has what their estimated costs for services, but I've been managing and monitoring in that, and based on actual usage, another thing that's been critical, and I think the numbers show, is, I think in two thousand and eight, we had almost twenty-four thousand units being serviced. Today, we have nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-six. When I took over, and I gave, I gave a present, as, as the director, I gave a presentation on this to council, that for a time period there, we were always struggling with the authority in the city to, hey, you know, I feel we're paying for units that aren't being serviced, 'cause they're on the, the DBO list, or they're gonna be demolished, and, and that was to the tune of between five hundred and a thousand units a year that we're basically paying, but we worked out some solutions to where I worked with John Stempel, and we had created, like, I'd give him a house count of eight hundred, well, hey, Phil, we don't know when it's gonna be occupied, or it isn't, or is somebody gonna remodel it, we can't take it off the list. I understand that, but we created a process where we did one letter for cert, certification of revoke, revoke, revocation of occupancy, which pretty much guaranteed, nobody will occupy that house, and then the authority agreed to take them off the list. We are now the closest we ever been to what Lori Brown says is our house count, and what the authority bills us. Lori Brown this year told me my house count is nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-six, and the authority right away said, we're gonna bill you for nineteen thousand three. That's, this is the first time that I know of that it's been equal. And you know, that's gonna change, I mean, hopefully it'll get to the point to where I'm emailing her and say, hey, I need to add five hundred houses to the count, not taken away, so.
Councilman Clark?
You've been a busy guy. I, I think you've already answered a lot of the questions that I have, the buck seventy-five, that stays?
As of, my, my recommendation this year is to try to squeak through one more year. The other thing we did, Councilman, to try to decrease some costs is, because so many people that work for me are involved in so many different operations, that I, I monitor where their work through Work Order System is being provided year by year, and I was able to reduce some of the individuals that were budgeted into the rubbish fund percentage a little bit back into some streets and, and some other functions to take some costs away, and that was about a hundred thousand. So, the gap that I had earlier of three hundred thousand is now down to about two hundred thousand. There's about four hundred thousand in fund balance, so my recommendation to not raise the fee this year is to utilize two hundred thousand of that fund balance. Now, keep in mind, none of the budget has anything for capital, so, I mean, it's, we've been very tight on the fee, you know, just to keep that cost down to the.
Legacy costs, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven eighty-eight. Have those been dropping?
Actually, no, them have been increasing.
Have been increasing?
Yeah, every year, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for, them, them actually have been increasing yearly, I don't know where we're at this year, I think it's kind of neutral for this year, I think, from what I've seen in presentations from Office of...
I'm referring to the legacy costs.
Yeah, you're talking retiree healthcare, unfunded MERS, all that?
No, legacy costs of the, the previous, the previous rubbish program that we had. Some, someone, I, you went pretty fast, you should be an auctioneer. I, I missed the page that it was on.
Though, yeah, those legacies, Councilman, you were looking at are a direct correlation to any individuals throughout the lifetime or the history of this fund, that were part of this fund that have since gone on and retired, and are getting retiree healthcare and/or have a pension system that are tied to this fund. That is our portion, that is what it costs the city of Saginaw. So, of that overall four-million-dollar fund, four hundred thousand of that is, you know, is ten percent, is like...
The chargebacks.
Yes.
Those, those are, those are fees that ratted on to taxes that became delinquent.
Correct.
And I think, I believe, a couple of years ago, we had a problem at the compost, well, a site, where you had difficulty collecting from some people. Has that been rectified?
Yes. As far as the compost site...
Contractors or whatever that were dumping and not paying?
Yeah, we no longer allow dumping without paying, so I think back in the day, they actually would allow a certain amount of debt to be, you know, accumulated, and then we had some issues where we had to take some people to court to get collection on that, but we no longer allow you to dump if you don't pay, so it took care of that right away.
Good, I think everything else was pretty well-covered, yard waste, legacy costs. So, you, you feel, you feel that you can adequately save that amount of money with recycling and yard waste?
Yes.
Good luck to you, let's get it done.
One other opportunity on that, up until about a year ago, as far as yard waste goes, individual communities' yard waste was monitored separately. So, I always knew, hey, Saginaw Township brought in so many, Thomas Township, you know, rural areas, we tracked it that way. In order to keep costs down, Mid-Michigan Waste Association, when we were getting into that extension, said they wanted to get away from that, 'cause we knew there were some sharing of trucks probably, you know, I mean, obviously, the city truck that's driving the border between Saginaw, Carroll and Bridgeport's probably grabbing some Bridgeport loads, so another thing I like about bringing that back in is, I know that every truck that comes in from Waste Management is non-city, it's billable. Right now, I know, they're, they're doing it based on a ten-year average of, you know, they've tracked this for ten or fifteen years now, so they have a good idea, seasonally based on, you know, what happens, how much volume comes in, but this is just another way for me to know for a fact, that every truck coming from Waste Management is non-city, and therefore, billable at eight fifty a yard.
One more, one more question, you have a list here on page two of the forty-some-odd members of the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority, are, are any of those people using our, our sites for dumping?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and not all of them actually provide yard waste, and I don't have that in front of me. I think there's, there's well over twelve to fifteen of the communities, some of the more rural communities, they don't pay for and/or provide yard waste, but I think between twelve and fifteen of the communities listed do use our compost facility as part of the authority for their yard waste. There's no other facility that I know of within the area that will accept.
So, the next question comes to economics, are we charging enough?
Well, this is going live, a couple, three years ago, when I looked...
Could we, could we make a slight adjustment?
Well, do I have to answer that?
Some other time.
Okay. I got a great answer for you.
Thank you.
And you will like it? If I could defer that for a later time, though, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Phil, I'm done, but I got a question for you after the news.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, Councilmembers. Up, up, go ahead, Councilman Tibbs.
So, are we looking to hire two or four employees?
Four.
Okay. And is it possible, see, like this GIC, excuse me, GIS data system, with other municipalities that participate in the authority, maybe they see that they have the same statistical usage of, of recycle and yard waste, is it, I mean, is it foreseeable that they could hire our GIS system to provide similar service?
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna speak for our director, but he's always out there looking for that, and I'm sure he'd be, it'd be just one more product that he'd be willing to sell probably, or therefore provide, you know, they already do some stuff for the county as a whole, so I'm sure he'd, he'd be more than willing to do that.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Carter.
Okay, any others, any others? Well, Phil, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the management update.
All right. All right.
Mayor, you are now at the consensus agenda.
And I'd like to announce that the agenda has been available at City Hall and on web, the city's website and SGTV channel 191. I need a motion to adopt the consent calendar, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is reports from boards, commissions and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any committee reports? Any committee reports? Being none, can we go on to the appointments then? We're ready for appointments then? Are these, don't need any votes on any of these?
Yes, they do. Would you like a motion to approve all the four items leaving room?
I'm looking for some direction from any of these councilmembers.
I make the motion to approve all city managers and mayor appointments.
Has presented? They moved and supported, is any further discussion on that?
No.
Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at the consideration and passing of ordinances. And we do have one this evening. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 151 Housing Regulations Title 15 Land Usage of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances 01.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next order of business is resolutions. We have one this evening. It is to seek the fiscal year 2018 local bridge program funds from the Michigan Department of Transportation for preventative maintenance on the Center Street, Court Street and Johnson Street bridges.
Need a motion to adopt. It's been moved and supported, is any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other? Is that okay if I say any other business come before the council, councilmembers? Being none? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Been moved and supported, all in favor signify by aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.